Of the Wayne County. Wayne County Committee of the Whole to Order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson has requested an excuse. Commissioner Basham.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Dogg.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hattis. Commissioner Hattis.
Present.
Commissioner Colleen.
Here.
Commissioner Kenlock. Commissioner Kenlock. Commissioner Kneecik.
Here.
Commissioner Morecki.
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Here.
Commissioner Spat has requested an excuse. Commissioner Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun.
Here.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Here.
Chair Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kenlock. You have a quorum present.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the November sixteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting.
So moved. Their motion, okay, been moved as support.
Support.
Moved and supported the approval of the minutes from the November sixteenth meeting. Any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Chair's remarks.
Thank you. Just want to say we're having this committee of the whole because at another year, there are a lot of things that we need to dispose of. You'll see some items on here today and on the full board agenda for tomorrow. A lot of cleanup items, a lot of items that we just want to make sure we dispose of in this calendar year. So thank you all for able to make it today. We have some good, exciting news on the agenda for today. So without further ado, next item, please.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We are moving to item E one, a communication requesting commission.
Madam Chair, I mean Madam Chair, elevated you. Madam Clerk, I'd like to go to item number five of the addenda for Miller Law Firm.
Okay. We are moving to the addenda, item number five is requesting commission approval of a settlement in the matter of the Charter County of Wayne at Aw versus Jansen Pharmaceuticals.
Okay, very good. And before we begin, just want to confirm with our commission counsel, this does not require a closed session, correct? Felicia.
Good morning. Through the chair, the Department of Corporation Counsel has requested a closed session because there is still pending litigation with other defendants. I'm sure, I believe they're on the line and they can speak to that request.
Okay. Corporation Counsel.
Good, good morning, Madam Chair. Felicia is correct. We, although this is a significant development in terms of the settlement for the litigation that this commission allowed us to begin years ago along with County Executive Evans, there still are some outstanding defendants who have yet to come to the table for a settlement.
Okay.
While we do want to make sure that we provide all of the information that the commission needs, we do not want to prejudice that, that ongoing litigation. And so for that purpose, we are requesting closed session.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. The part, Morecki.
Okay, it's been moved and supported going to closed session.
Before you do that, Clerk, can you read the reason into the record for us? Or I guess I can do it. So a closed session request and the motion is based upon the fact that Corporation Counsel has opined that discussion of trial or settlement strategy in the open meeting for this pending litigation could have a financial detrimental impact on the county in its settlement position. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we get a roll call vote to go into closed session, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. And for the record, Commissioner Kenlock has joined the meeting.
Okay, and we do have the capabilities to go into a separate breakout room, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to call the room.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogg.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik. Commissioner Kneecik.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
We're now going to move into closed session. Motion carries.
Okay. And those pertinent people, you move them to us into a separate breakout room. Okay, everyone, please go to the breakout room. An open session. We are back in open session. I will entertain a motion for item E five.
So moved, Morecki.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we would take a roll call vote on this item.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Colleen.
Do we need to be more specific in the motion rather than say I move to? Don't we have to say whether to approve or to disapprove?
In, in the item, it says requesting commission approval of a settlement. So by approving it will be stating what it says.
I just want, since we're in public meeting, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew what the motion was. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Madam Clerk, if you want to read the first sentence. Uh-oh, did we lose Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Sometimes it takes a minute for everyone to get out of the breakout rooms.
That's right. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that can go wrong.
Oh, moving too fast. Okay, let me make sure.
Sorry, guys.
Is Octavia still here?
Gag neat.
Ag neat.
Yes, I'm still here, Chair.
Okay, let me know when we have everyone back out of the breakout room.
I believe everyone should be back by now. There was a sixty second timer from when the room was going to close.
Okay. We'll wait a few more seconds and then I'll start over, making sure everyone is back. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could read item five for us again, please.
Item number five is requesting commission approval of a settlement in the matter of the Charter County of Wayne at Aw versus Jansen Pharmaceuticals.
Okay, their motion.
So moved.
So moved, Morecki.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on item E five? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogg.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen. Commissioner Colleen.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick. Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, thank you to all that were involved in this. Thank you. All right, going back to the beginning of the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Absolutely. We're on page two of the agenda. Item number one is requesting commission approval of a subscription services agreement and case management services order form between the Charter County of Wayne and P S Technologies.
Okay, who from the administration can go over this one?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Robin Diller, Director of the Indigent Defense Services Department. I'm actually here with our IT manager as well, Jill Tines, who can answer more of the technical aspects of the system. But Madam Chair, by way of background, this case management system is sort of the core and final piece of the requirement that we need to successfully transition the functions of Third Circuit to the county and to our department related to attorney payment and assignment. If you recall, Madam Chair and Commissioners, back when we became a department, part of our discussion with you related to how the county could absorb the attorney assignment payments, indigent defense service provider assignments and payments from the court to the county. After lengthy research, lengthy conversations with systems around the country and around Michigan, we were able to successfully find a vendor who could help us with this sort of administrative function that we need to transition these functions out of the court into the county. If we are successful in getting this approved by this body today, this is that necessary piece that we need to really, really, really get our department up and running and hopefully have a successful transition, if you will, as well as case management data collection that is integral to our continued relationship with the M I B C. So I am available to answer any questions that you may have. Certainly, if it's related to any technical aspect of the system, Jill Tines can speak to that. So we remain here available for your consideration.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Okay. Been, been moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Colleen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to, for the record, this is being paid for out of the grant from the state of Michigan that we got to transition to this new public defender system, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Colleen. This was a function of our request through that grant. The M I D C did approve the monies for us to obtain a system, and we are finally to that point.
So just to underline that, put a fine point on it, no county general fund dollars are involved here.
Well, Commissioner Colleen, you know, there is that local share that is a part of the grant, the seven.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
Absolutely. But yes, to your point, yes, this was an approved portion of the grant that was dedicated to a case management system.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Basham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item, it says it's a fleeting business opportunity. And how, my question is, how's this business opportunity fleeting? I mean.
Yeah, yes.
Left me hanging.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Basham, I didn't mean to cut you off. So, and Jill Tines can help speak to this as well. So, so Commissioner, basically what incorporates this into a fleeting business opportunity? And we also had this discussion with procurement as well. Our grant funds are always fleeting. That's number one. If you recall, we were unable to successfully get a fiscal twenty one contract until March of this year. And there was sort of a six month period that is a part of the M I D C requirement where we have to sort of do everything that we said we were going to do within our grant contract funding year. This particular system and this particular vendor has not had any contact with Michigan in the sense that they haven't set up anything. We had discussions with this particular vendor to get an understanding of what the system looks like, how it works. We were unable to really, really understand what the need was for the county until we did research through our strategic partner, C C I. So all of this and, and to also follow up with that, these particular systems are proprietary. So every system is different, and in order to really understand what we need, it took a lot of time to develop that understanding. And then we have to find that system and not run out of our grant funding for the year. So that, to us, demonstrated a fleeting business opportunity. We received procurement approval as well. And that's how we ended up with that today. I don't know, Jill, if you wanted to add anything additional for Commissioner Basham?
Mainly, we, I only want to add that we had previously tried to pursue this under sole source designation under the clause B of the sole source exceptions where software applications and designated professional services could, apologies, could be considered sole source when comparable sources would be detrimental to the county's best interests. We considered a variety of competitors and found that none of them would be able to meet the minimum requirements functionally, in addition to being able to meet our constricted time constraints for the grant and the compliance requirements under the M I D C Act.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on that same note, it, so it looked like a sole source contract was put into the commission and that it was retracted and then this fleeting business opportunity, which I've never heard before. Maybe we've had that in the past, but I don't remember that. So, so I get what you're saying, but was this just kind of the wording being changed to satisfy the commission, legal staff and our staff? And when it was pulled, it was, it was sole source and then it was pulled back and changed to this new fleeting business opportunity?
Madam Chair, may I?
Absolutely. I mean, sorry.
So through the chair, this is Felicia. So this contract was initially submitted as a sole source procurement. When we received it, because we were aware that there were other vendors, we sent it back to the department because it doesn't qualify as sole source. When they resubmitted it, they resubmitted it as a fleeting business opportunity. In one of the subsequent responses to one of our questions, it gave, it mentioned comparable source. However, it was technically never submitted as comparable source. So I believe there was a misunderstanding in the way an item should have been submitted to actually receive comparable source consideration. So when we sent it back, someone from procurement or somewhere probably should have advised this new department of how to properly submit it to get consideration for comparable source, which never occurred. And we were never engaged in that, and it just came up as fleeting. And then we started having a conversation about whether or not this qualifies as fleeting. As you see from my analysis, I do not believe this qualifies for fleeting in any way. However, it would have potentially qualified for comparable source, but it wasn't properly submitted. So that was probably just a breakdown in the way it was submitted and maybe communications. Because you can't submit it and say it's sole source, you actually have to say it's comparable source and submit it as such, which actually never occurred. So I think that there was just a breakdown in communication in how this should have been submitted and worded to get the consideration. It appears the department was initially seeking for this item.
So Felicia, have we ever had something submitted in the last five years that you remember as a fleeting business opportunity?
We very rarely get fleeting. When this administration came in, there were a few items they submitted as fleeting and they're escaping me. They were rather large. So yes, it has happened. It's never happened in a situation, I believe, where there's been grant funds. Because these grant funds, we already have, so I wouldn't consider this the, the grant funds fleeting. We have a procurement provision regarding exigent approval when you're concerned with losing grant funds because of deadlines. There's actually another provision that specifically addresses that, which is exigent. But yes, there have been fleeting business opportunities over the years, but they are not common.
Okay, thank you. And back to the administration, it looks like this has been going on for about a year and nine months. They were applied, the grants were applied for in two thousand twenty and got them in March of two thousand twenty one. And now we're just approving this like a week before the deadline. Is that right? I mean, is that because you were building? You, you never did RFPs for this, right? Is that right?
That is correct.
Because you were building on what you wanted?
We, not only were we, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
And not only were we building, Commissioner Morecki, but we were, and I want to say prior to even my start with the county back in twenty twenty, there was a lot of research going on. If you recall, the M I D C obviously was very new. Systems across Michigan were very new. So there was really no framework in which to determine what a case management system would look like within the municipality, much less an indigent defense system and the modes of reform. So there was a lot of research and strategic planning that occurred over really several years to determine these types of functions that the county would have to absorb and what that looks like. And it wasn't until we really finished the strategic planning with the Center for Court Innovation through the Department of Justice that we had an understanding of what Third Circuit Court was doing, how that could transition to the county, what functions were needed, what was required by M I D C, and how we needed to comply with the standard as it was just passed by Laura in late last year. So yes, it appears that it was over a year, but that really was development of and understanding of what the need really was. So we really couldn't even do a formal proposal for a vendor because we had no idea what was necessary or required until we conducted this research.
So did Legal Server, did they kind of work hand in hand with the county to get the program you wanted? Or did they already have a program that met the criteria that you wanted?
Jill, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. So it is a little bit of a combination of both. Their commercial off the shelf product can already do many of the functions we want. They have a suite of what IT folks call APIs, which is the fancy way of saying they can communicate with other systems, which will set us up for success as the standards modify and change. They have automated workflows already in place to automate functions that we need, such as appointment of counsel, generation of vouchers for counsel, and they'll be able to export and report information to be sliced, diced and reported to our county commission, to the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, and to other relevant stakeholders who may need information about how we are operating. It'll also give us the transparency to be able to see how are we spending money? How are cases being appointed? How are the outcomes being impacted for our constituents? They have what I like to call the ability to replicate and enhance what is already in place with Third Circuit Court in the collection of information we need from non-county stakeholders such as district courts, as well as some of the elected offices that we have to interface with, such as the sheriff and again, the circuit court itself. They also do have part, a large chunk of this contract value upfront. Is some of the modification required and configuration required to make it more fine tuned to Wayne County specific requirements and requests? So once we have this initial contract, the ongoing cost to the county is under fifteen thousand dollars per year.
Okay, and I see the wording got taken out of the contract that it, this will automatically renew every year?
Correct. We did get rid of the auto renew language.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Colleen? You're on mute?
Yeah, 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 I'm doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to commission counsel on this. I've got a few things I'd like to ask you, commission counsel. I'll do it all in one. First, how long has fleeting business opportunity been provisioned in our procurement ordinance? What does fleeting opportunity say? If you can, you know, briefly summarize what that means in the procurement ordinance. And then thirdly, counselor, you didn't think that this qualified under fleeting business opportunity as it's written in our laws? What would be your concern that we would pass it as a fleeting business opportunity and then set some sort of precedence for other fleeting opportunities to come to the commission like this one has? So what, how long has it been in the ordinance? How long has it been law that we've had fleeting? Basically, what does that say? And are you concerned about a precedent here?
So through the chair, it's my understanding that the provision for fleeting business opportunity was in the ordinance from its conception. So in two thousand and six, when the county and this, with this commission approved the comprehensive procurement ordinance, I believe that provision was in the ordinance at that time. So since two thousand and six, when the ordinance was initially adopted. What fleeting business opportunity says is that if there's a business opportunity presented to the county that would become unavailable through the ordinary competitive bidding process, then the county can pursue that particular opportunity. It does give examples such as if there's a narrow time period to get the goods or if you're pursuing grants and there's time constraints. But that is fleeting business opportunity, something that essentially won't last long. It's before you now. It could be in the county's best interest, and it's something you want to pursue and you can't do a normal procurement process. In this instance, I'll tell you that while I do not agree with the department or procurement, our procurement division, that this is a fleeting business opportunity. And I set forth numerous reasons to the department and in my analysis as to why I don't think it qualifies in any faction for fleeting. I will say that ultimately, based on one of the responses we received when we were questioning fleeting, the department said something that had not been said in the initial stages. So when we originally received this, again, it came up as sole source. We told the department it did not qualify for sole source. We questioned that. We included procurement in those discussions and no point did anyone say we actually mean comparable source. When the, when we returned it, they resubmitted it as fleeting business opportunity. So we began a discussion of whether this qualifies as fleeting. It wasn't until we start questioning fleeting and one of their responses, they indicated something related to comparable. This would have been appropriate for comparable source. It appears to me that there was just a breakdown in the beginning in how it was initially submitted to the commission to actually clarify that it was comparable source. And that was, appears to be their intent based on what they said today is what they were initially trying to do. Again, there was a breakdown in the way it was submitted. But I did request a meeting with the administration and procurement to discuss fleeting business opportunities so that we can get on the same page as to what we believe it means. And if we can't get on the same page, so I can get a clarification of what they believe it means and come back to this body if, to see if you deem it necessary to make a future amendment. So at this point, Commissioner, I won't say I have any particular concerns with approving this, but I do look forward to having that discussion with the administration and procurement to get clarification so that we won't have this issue in the future.
You, counselor, and I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're going to have discussions with administration as to what fleeting means. I didn't want to get hung up on this item just based on whether it was fleeting or comparable source because I am supportive of the shift that we've gone through to get better indigent defense in this county and broader indigent defense. And I would not have wanted to hold this up just based on a definition in the procurement ordinance. So I'm glad you don't have any concern that we're setting some sort of precedent that we can't undo. And I wish you luck in your discussions with administration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Basham.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogg. Commissioner Hattis.
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik.
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun.
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Yes.
Chair Bell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Next item, number two and three are joint, so we can take those together. Commission counsel, do you want to start off before we go to the administration on these two? As to why they're here in this order?
Through the chair, so we received a request, the commissioner received a request to approve this item to extend it to out through September twenty twenty two and to add, I believe, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. During the staff's review of this item, we discovered that there was actually another amendment that was done as an emergency procurement that had not been received and filed by the commission and we were not aware of it. So the commission needs to receive and file, I believe we calling it amendment number one, before we can actually have moved forward with amendment number two. So the original item, I believe, was an emergency procurement. They was issued by the procurement division. It was received and filed by the commission. The second amendment, amendment was, this first amendment, amendment number one was not received. So now we have both items on the agenda. We have an amendment that was done by the department, I believe, in October of twenty twenty, extending the item out to December of twenty twenty one through the end of this year. And then we have the item that they are seeking approval of today, which is item number three on your agenda, which is a. And then we have the item that they are seeking approval of today, which is item number three on your agenda, which is amendment number two. But we need to receive and file amendment one before we can actually do a subsequent amendment, which is amendment number two.
Motion to approve item number two, amendment number one.
Do them together, please, sir.
Okay, motion to approve item number two, amendment number one and item number three, which is amendment number two.
Support Baker McCormick.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Commissioner Basham?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
You clarify? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. To clarify, so item number two is a receiving file?
Yes, yes.
This course clear for everyone. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counsel. On our agenda though, it says request of commission approval.
Yes, that will be changed for full board, Madam Chair. Sorry for that.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Commissioner Basham?
Okay, for agenda item number two, it was interesting to note, and maybe somebody could explain it. That Dave Brooks was a former Wayne County Health, Human and Veteran Services. Now he's the Chief Strategy Officer for this company. And then also the fact that it's comparable source. So it's raising red flags for this old skunk all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just what Commissioner Basham said too. Were we aware? Okay, so these are all receive and file. These have already happened, correct? These are all.
Number two already happened and that's receiving file. Number three is a amendment.
Okay, so number three is an amendment and after the four amendments. It's going to be like one point two million dollars, it looks like.
In totality?
Yes, in totality. And we're, were we just made aware that Mr. Brooks was the chief strategy person on this? Can anybody, did we just find it by accident or do we have, we known that?
Someone from the administration is asking for a commission or the administration commissioner?
I guess the commission. I have a feeling administration probably knew that, but I'm wondering if we knew that.
So so through the chair?
Yeah.
I believe it's one of the analysts discovered that in the course of analyzing the agreement.
Likely something.
I think Chris wanted to say something. Chris was the analyst for this.
Yes.
Hey, Chair Bell, Commissioner Morecki and my director. Yes, this is Chris Oliver, policy analyst for the Wayne County Commission. Commissioner Morecki, yes, this time around with these two coherent R X items, I did notice. That on the org chart, the organizational chart that is submitted. As part of the administration's response or policies for. Answering conflict of interest disclosure type questions. They do submit a business information questionnaire, often along with an org chart from the vendor. And on the org chart, I did notice that a Dave Brooks was listed as the chief strategy officer. And so I went on LinkedIn to try to further verify this and sure enough, on his LinkedIn profile. It's his picture, which I remember. Says he's currently the chief strategy officer of this coherent R X company. And then it shows that he was previously employed as the H H V S director for the county.
So did the administration in the ethics, do they have to fill out an ethics form for something like this? Was that noted anywhere? You just found it on the organizational chart?
I can't speak for any other previous coherent items without going back to look at them now. However, on the ethics form, the conflict of interest disclosure questions. Only pertain to, it's, I believe it's if someone is working for the company or has a major shareholder position in the company that has worked for the county. Within the past year and also we don't have as a commission, an official receiving file notification of when Mr. Brooks left the county. We only have an official resignation from his designated position on the Health Choice, Health Choice Board of Trustees, which was. I want to say back on January third of twenty twenty. So if I'm thinking about this right, it seems like they still could have been in the year window here unless. Not thinking about this correctly. Again, we don't have the exact date that Mr. Brooks left the county on file, but the commission to further verify that for ourselves.
Okay, so maybe the administration can give us that date or give me that date.
Is there someone from the administration who can speak to these items? We hadn't had them speak to this. And I don't know who that would be on the line.
Good morning. This is Melita Durden. I'm the Director for Health, Human and Detrining Services. I cannot add a lot of information regarding Mr. Brooks because that was prior to my onboarding. I started, of course, May third, twenty twenty-one. So I am not aware of the previous director and the involvement of coherent R X. So unfortunately, I can't give you much information regarding that. In terms of there is a conflict of interest form that is signed excluding a former. Department head from being or participating in this type of grant opportunity. So I can't really speak to that. So my apologies for that, but I don't have that information at this time. But I certainly could make sure I follow up to get that information for the commission and bring back to you.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Hi.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, Carol, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. This is Carol Osprey, Health Officer, Direct, you know, Public Health Division Director. And yes, I know that, you know, all of the correct contract forms were filled out. And when we initially, you know, were working and looking for a vendor who could provide these services. There was a review to, you know, extensive review. And as far as, you know, these information, secure information technology wraparound services. To be able to provide for the Wayne County employees to be able to schedule their online, schedule online for their coherent. Or for their, I'm sorry, COVID nineteen testing. And then they receive their results securely through this platform on their smartphones. This is particularly useful for the Wayne County Sheriff's deputies. And so when all of the emergency procurement on this began. I know that, you know, we did all of the due diligence to ensure that. Coherent R X was the firm that could provide these services for us, especially when we were, you know, initiating everything with. Our response for COVID nineteen, wanting to ensure that county employees. Were able to securely and efficiently make appointments and then receive those COVID nineteen test results.
Madam Chair, just one more comment and that's great. It sounds like a great company. But again, we're just, we're just. Receiving and files some of this and then approving the next one. I would just like to know the dates and it doesn't mean there's anything going on with Mr. Brooks being part of that company. I am not insinuating that. I would just like to know, should we have been made aware of that? At some point and not just had our staff find out. We all know Mr. Brooks, fine guy. I just would like to know the timing of how all this happened. Thank you.
We can get those.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, but Commissioner Morecki addressed the questions or the statement I was going to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. And if you can have the date of Mr. Brooks resignation from the county before tomorrow for a board, that would be great. Okay, any additional questions on the receiving file of number two and the approval of number three?
One, one question, Madam Chair, I just thought about. What, what are the alternatives in this case? What, what would we be able to do to, I don't know if we can reverse. Especially the emergency procurement, previous. Approval, but can the staff attorney address this?
Through the chair.
You want Council Johnson or or Counselor Winter?
Johnson, yes, Alicia, please.
Commissioner, I'm not sure. Can you, can you repeat the question?
The question is, at this point, what are our alternatives if there is some issue with it?
So. That track. So the original contract was procure as an emergency procurement. The commission was not involved in it. We didn't approve it, but we did receive and file it. This item number two was also an emergency procurement. It has already occurred and it's actually, it's apparently occurring because it expires December thirty-one. But again, it was done without commission approval and it's getting ready to end. With regards to the new item, item number three, to extend it out to September of twenty twenty-two. If there is indeed determined to be a conflict, then that was not disclosed on the ethics form. That that would be a reason to debar the vendor and not move forward with the contract. There is a provision in the procurement ordinance with regards to ethics. That says that if a vendor hires a county employee, that the procurement division is to ensure that that business doesn't receive an unfair advantage. Depending on the dates of how this played out when Mr. Brooks left, if he was involved in it prior to leaving. Once that information is determined, then the county can potentially pursue debarring the business from future contracting. Not sure how much of that we can actually work through between now and tomorrow. But we definitely can perhaps have a conversation with the administration to, to make sure that there are no concerns. And that Mr. Brooks was not actually involved in the contracting process when he was here with Wayne County. Your alternative would be simply not to move forward with it at this time. Again, I don't know how that will affect the actual operations of the Public Health Division with regards to scheduling for COVID testing. So that may be something else that needs to be considered before the commission takes a vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Through the chair, T R Winter, Wayne County Corporation Counsel.
Go ahead, go ahead, T R.
Thank you. Yes, I do know that I was involved in making sure that Mr. Brooks resigned from the Health Choice Board. As, as was said in early January, and I believe his departure date from the county was December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And although I was not involved in the initial contract with Health Choice. I was involved in writing a business associate agreement with them, I believe in the middle of twenty twenty. And the only business activity that coherent R X is doing is a, an app about COVID appointments. I believe the county heard that they were doing it for D T E and some other vendors. So I believe unless he had knowledge that COVID was going to exist back in December of, of twenty twenty. You know, that's the only thing they've been involved in with. And to my knowledge, when it was expressed that we had heard, I think, probably May, June. When there was testing available of twenty twenty, that they had an app that allowed for the scheduling and this. Secure reporting of COVID test results. And that's when there were discussions with them because that's the only contracted business that I know about they've had with Wayne County. And that's the subject of this contract.
Okay, do you have a follow up question, Commissioner Baker McCormick? Are you?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions on item two and three? Okay, hearing none. Roll call votes for item two and three together.
Commissioner Basham?
Reluctant, yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dogg?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen? Commissioner Colleen?
Was off mute. Nobody has a hard time hearing me. That's the second time today. I.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Baydung?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next items, if you could scroll up, please.
We're moving to item number four, requesting commission approval of amendment number six to a contract between the Charter County of Wayne. And Memorial Healthcare and that's would see four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, extending the term of the contract and adjusting the scope of services.
Move a comment there.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there support? Moved and supported. There's someone from the administration to discuss this item, please.
Sure. Hi, everyone. It's Jennifer Caruso, Division Director, Clinical Services. We have a three month amendment with Memorial Healthcare to provide COVID inmate testing and testing of the sheriffs.
Okay, and just three months? Any reason why just three months?
Yeah, the, the short term was selected because of the, the vaccine mandate. And it's associated employee testing for the sheriffs. As you know, probably everyone on this call, the federal government declared the vaccine mandate recently. And then shortly after that, we called it and temporarily suspended it. So this created some instability within this amendment. So hence the reason for the, the short term of the agreement.
So given that we will continue to test, do you anticipate coming back? In three months to extend this?
So right now, we are in discussion with the state of Michigan to provide sheriff testing. So we are looking at that to reduce the cost to the county.
Okay, are there any questions on this item? Any questions on item four? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Basham?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dogg?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
I.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Baydung?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Thank you. Next item, please.
Such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
No other matters. Next item?
Public comments.
Do you have any emails, Madam Clark?
I received one email.
Okay, if you can read your email and then we'll go to Zoom to see if there's anyone on Zoom or on the telephone.
Okay, Madam Chair, how much time are you allotting?
I'm sorry, uh, ninety seconds.
Okay, thank you. This email is from Tim Riley. The C D C V A E R S website reports over eighteen thousand deaths directly associated with the COVID nineteen vaccines. Stop killing fellow Americans. Stop all funding to COVID nineteen vaccinations right now. This board complicit to the murder of fellow Americans. Stop putting my tax dollars to promote killing my friends. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comments at this time? Anyone on Zoom for the comments at this time? Is there anyone on the phone that would like to give the comments at this time? Anyone on the telephone? Okay, hearing none. Let me, before we go to adjournment, let me just say tomorrow, we have a very lengthy full board meeting. So pack your patience and your lunch. We are getting through the end of the year and disposing of items in this calendar year. So appreciate your patience as we move through tomorrow's agenda expeditiously, but of course, effectively and efficiently. So any comments from members before we adjourn?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have some comments, but they're not appropriate. Relative to masking and relative to getting a shot. So I won't, I won't, I won't make those comments.
Thank you for refraining from those comments, Commissioner. Any other one want to refrain from comments? Hearing none. Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate your patience today and we'll see you tomorrow.
Support.
Move the support. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all so much. See you tomorrow.
Bye.
Have a great day. Bye-bye.